Good evening, I'm Dan Eastgate, President of the Bismarck School Board. It's 5:15 on Monday, November 25th, I call this meeting to order. Welcome and thank you for joining us both here and also online. You can find our agenda and follow along online under the School Board tab at bismarckschools.org. Mr. Scher, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Eastgate?
Here.
Mr. Hager?
Here.
Mr. Lee?
Here.
Mrs. Peterson?
Here.
Ms. Preski?
Here.
All Board members present and accounted for. Dr. Fosnot, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 1C is the BPS mission, vision, and values. The BPS mission is to empower every learner to thrive. The BPS vision states, together, our strong relationships build inclusive, collaborative, and innovative environments that create agency and inspire a passion for learning, excellence, and discovery. The BPS values are inclusion, excellence, innovation, and leadership. You can also find a link in the agenda to the BPS strategic plan. Item 2 is to adopt the agenda. What are the wishes of the Board?
I'll move that we adopt the agenda. I'll second.
Motion is second. Mr. Scher.
Hager?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Preski?
Yes.
Eastgate?
Yes, motion passes. Item 3 is focus on success. Dr. Fosnot?
Tonight, we have several guests with us that are going to come to the podium and talk to you about check-in, connect, and check-in, check-out. Both are elements of our PBIS framework. So, I don't know who's coming up first, who's going to start. CHS team? We'll let you come on up first. We have Jesse Scalzo and Ms. Gina Phillips, who are going to talk about check-in, connect at CHS.
Good evening, welcome.
Evening, thank you for having us. Check-in to connect is a two-tier intervention that we use in the high schools. And we have four main components of check-in, connect. And so, it is a mentorship program. So, we have identified mentors in the high schools that have that role. It's a one-to-one relationship with the students. And it is, the purpose is to sustain that over two years. Each week, as a mentor, we check the attendance, we check the data. So, the data includes attendance, behavior, and course performance, so like their grades, et cetera. And then, at least once a week, we share that data with the students, and that is called the connect portion. So, we meet with the students once a week, give them feedback, maybe provide interventions if they need some additional assistance, get them connected with other adults in the building that can help them. And then, at least once a month, we connect with families so that they know exactly what's going on in these meetings and kind of have an idea of where the students are headed. So, the mentorship training, sorry, we were trained last November by CRIA, and all high schools and elementary schools were trained. At CHS, we currently have 23 mentors and 23 mentee students. At Legacy High School, they have identified 26 mentors and 23 students to go along with those mentors. And at BHS, there are 33 mentors and 28 students. So, we are always kind of looking for new students that need this step as we move forward. So, in order to determine which students we would work with in this program, we identified them as students that were not in special ed, so our general education students. We wanted to focus on freshmen, sophomores, students that could potentially be at risk for dropout, but with a mentor opportunity, hoping to keep them engaged in school. So, with that, to identify the students, we looked if they were not hitting that 80% tier-one target. So, if their attendance is below 80%, if they are failing more than two classes, if there's maybe some sort of social-emotional need that has been identified. Those are the main things we look for to identify those mentees. We go through the process of the student assistance team, which is our problem-solving process, and the SAT team approves the students. And through that, we work together to partner them with a mentor. And then, in addition, the parental approval and that workmanship with the parents is really important.
So, with this, I mean, we have the connects, and so, this is kind of somewhat of our data. This is some sentry only. So, when we look at sentry's data, the connects is those interventions that we do. So, that could be families, parent meeting, that can be meeting with a kid and doing some strategies with them, and those types of things. We have 397 connects, and then, the total minutes that we had, we had 3,080 minutes. So, as we move forward down, we're on to the right there. So, currently, right now, this fall, we have 358?
Thirty.
Thirty-eight connects, so interventions that we're doing with kids. And then, we have 2,260 minutes. So, what we've found by doing these interventions and matching the minutes, we've seen success. We've seen some growth in our students. So, when we started, the kids were at like a 60%, a lot of them were at 50%, you know, so they were failing two or more classes. So, when we started now, as we're looking at our data, we're at 74%, 72%, and then 74%. That 14.9%, that was during the summer months. So, we weren't providing so much of that, but that's just how we got that. But right now, most of our kids are, you know, still at the lower part of a C, you know, but we're getting them from where they were to where they are now. So, that's really good, by providing that mentorship and those strategies. So, here with behavior incidents, we've seen that fall. Now, you see, behavior referrals have gone, it's not so high at sentry, but then, this fall, we've seen some of that. But we got the buyback that's really hot, because a lot of our kids have attendance issues on check-in, connect, so they have to do buyback. So, that's where that's up a little bit, so they do their buyback time, so then they can earn the credit that they need. So, attendance, as we see, you know, missed classes. So, this is what's nice, when we started with a lot of the same kids this year that we had last year. So, now, this fall, we can see that, you know, attendance has gotten better than, you know, only when, because actually, this first part was the second semester, when we started, the spring semester. So, now, this fall semester, we see the numbers have fallen with missed classes. So, we're hoping that that could continue to grow with the kids that we have in check-in, connect.
So, some of the successes we've had, obviously, we meet every week with the students, so we really get to know them as mentors and mentees, and we work closely with parents. So, this opens a really nice communication door with parents, and we're all kind of on the same page. We've noticed that students have felt a better sense of belonging in our schools, that they definitely can identify at least one adult in their life now that is there for them, that can help them. All of the interventions that we provide are trauma-informed, so we have a variety of students coming from different places in their lives, and our interventions are safe and responsible for all students. We are monitoring that attendance and behavior, and so, as part of our connect portion, that's when we work on those strategies to improve their attendance, to approve their grades and behavior, things like that. We work with the families, again, to identify resources that the students might need, whether that's in-school resources, changing their class schedule, things like that, or resources within the community that we might be able to provide for them. Let's see, the data shows improvements in those tardies, unexcused absences, missed classes, overall and general. And I think having somebody checking on that at least once a week and kind of asking some questions and seeing if there's a reason why and what they need has been really helpful. It has also shown to have improvements in detention and suspension. So, we see those behaviors kind of going down. I guess some final thoughts is that check-in, connect is really good for building those relationships in our schools between the students and teachers and families. It's working to foster that social, emotional, and academic growth. It's building trust and autonomy with the parents in regards to, you know, what we do in the school, grades, social-emotional issues, interventions, et cetera. Again, we provide those resources, both within the school and outside the school. And then, this also gives us an opportunity to really figure out what the students need. So, it helps us figure out the right programming for the students, since we're getting to know them so well. You know, it might be that they need to move to a different tier of intervention, maybe they need to go into some small groups, maybe a 504, things like that. So, this helps just kind of us understand the student and put them where they need to be. We've also found that it sparks that intrinsic motivation in the students. They come to us and they want to do better, you know, and so, it gives us an opportunity to help them and to identify those goals and steps that they need to take so that they are able to do better. And the last piece is that it helps us as mentors understand what their motivation is in school and then communicate that to teachers so that we kind of are all on the same page as to what the students need.
Thank you, Board members. Any questions or comments? Ms. Preski?
When did this program start initially? How long has it been going on?
We had our training in November of 2023, and then, we started right before Thanksgiving of last year.
Okay, so about a year then?
Yep, about a year.
Exactly. And then, is this a common program that is being duplicated in other parts of the state, or how did you find out about it?
Yeah, that's a great question. It actually comes from the University of Minnesota, and it is a widely researched best-practice tier-two intervention. So, it came to the district through Student Services, I believe, Student Support Services, and yeah.
And then, what do you hear from the teachers or the mentors that are giving their time to this project?
I think they found that it's really valuable, because it does have that time where they, it is completely set aside for that one student. It's built relationships with the students. I think it also helps in collaboration between teachers as well, because they can talk to each other and learn to work with a student and get them exactly what they need in the classroom.
I think it also has given our general education teachers a really good perspective of what happens with some of these students that struggle socially, emotionally, you know, and it gives them that opportunity to see how they can grow from this as well personally. So, it's really helped our teachers to help them and empower them, you know, like they can do some of these one-to-one things with kids and kind of get to know them in a little more personal level. So, it's been good for our teachers, our general teachers that are involved in this, you know.
Yeah, thank you for bringing this to light. It sounds like an amazing program and something that just highlights, too, again, like the opportunities that we have in BPS to really meet the kids, students where they're at, and help them succeed. So, going that extra mile to help them get where they need to go. So, thank you very much.
Board members, any other questions? I just had one quick one, I guess, for you, and I agree with Ms. Preski on that. I just love that you guys are setting up all these great mentoring relationships between educators and kids and community members and kids. I think it's awesome, getting kids to buy in. The buyback, maybe I missed it. Can you tell me or define that for me and what that buyback period looks like?
Yeah, so if a student has, okay, they missed 10 absences, right, so they need to earn that time back. So, assistant principals then will assign them that detention or buyback time, so they can earn that, so they don't lose credit. And we've been really lenient in working with kids, and that doesn't happen, because we really want our students to get the grade they need, to pass ultimate goals when they graduate. And, you know, so that's that buyback time, and we normally do that in our transition center at sentry, and so, they do that, and hopefully, they buy back that time for their class that they need to do the extra hours in. So, normally, we do it during lunch period. That's why that buyback is kind of high during that period, because that's when you're doing it during their lunchtime.
Gotcha. Thank you, appreciate that. Board members, any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, if it works, we'll invite up Ms. Galindo and Mr. Fay to talk about check-in, check-out at Miller.
Good evening.
Good evening, Board President, distinguished Board members, Dr. Fosnot, Mr. Barnhardt. My name is Dave, I'm the Assistant Principal at Miller Elementary School, and I'm just going to introduce my team, because they do all the heavy lifting. So, this is Matty Galindo, our school counselor, and Tara Renner, our school's social worker. They're going to guide you through today's program.
Today, I was tasked to go through the success of our check-in, check-out program at Miller Elementary. Check-in, check-out is a tier-two behavior intervention that really supports kids by giving them an adult, a positive adult interaction, and also feedback throughout the day, intervals of feedback. Here is our 2023 and 24 numbers of check-in, check-out students. You can see, in October last year, we started with nine, ended the year in May with 26 students who were in check-in, check-out. Success rate, as you go through, our lowest number was 86%, which is still fabulous number. So, 86% of students that month were successful. And how we identified that is if students maintain an 85%, we take an average every week, if they maintain an 85% average for four weeks, that is our success rate. So, our numbers, as you can see, it was very successful for us. This is this year's current numbers. We currently have 12 in October in our tier-two check-in, check-out, and out of our success rate was 92%. September, we had six, and then, or sorry, and then 50% were successful. So, those students that were not successful with our check-in, check-out, we move those students to maybe a modified, or we move them on to a different intervention where they can be successful. These are some things that we feel like are unique to Miller, or I should say, are why we're successful with our check-in, check-out program. We do utilize our numbers, we use be respectful, responsible, and safe. We do 1-2-3s versus 0-1-2s. We feel like it's kind of looking more at a positives instead of kids seeing that zero. Kids also graph and are very involved with their daily averages. As you can see, they colored that, we did not. That is a student's graph, and so, they get really excited to see where they are and how they're doing. And then, our magic, so every time a student meets that goal for the day, they get a cross off a letter when they get to the, you know, end, when it crosses off magic, they get to choose from some kind of reinforcement. And I will be honest, most of the time, it's having a lunch with an adult, getting an extra recess. It's normally not one of those trinkets or toys, it's kind of that interaction with that adult. Down here, too, is something we started this year, it's identifying those feelings. So, every day, we have our students identify, where are you feeling? I know they kind of just look like a whole bunch of markers on here, but our students identified, we have it listed out, if they're feeling, you know, calm, happy, sad, angry. As you can see, most of the time, it seems like when they're checking in, those kids are at that calm rate, and the majority of the time, they're checking out, and they're feeling happy and successful and on that one rate. So, we're starting to kind of look at that data and starting to track, like, where are our kids check in and where are they check out, and is it helping them? So, this is from the mouths of students. So, we put, I asked them, what do you like about check-in, check-out? Our students state, I like to get hundreds, I always do. And it reminds you, this is from students answering these questions. So, I like to see the teachers. You get to cross off magic. I get to know how I'm doing throughout the day. It helps me be good. I just like it. So, most of the students, and we asked random students, and that's what we got. So, as we looked at that versus our outcomes, we have really noticed that we've had a change in those students that are following our school-wide expectations. We've had reduced rates of behavior incidents for those students, increased academic engagement and social skills, or the pro-social skills, and improved relationships with teachers and adults within our school building.
The next piece we have is what we call our Positive Affirmations Program. And this came to be last year in the 2023-24 school year, sort of naturally, as we were realizing that we were seeing a lot of students popping up with low self-esteem, lots of negative self-talk, and we felt like maybe check-in, check-out wasn't the right thing for them, but could we find something that would be? And so, the reason for affirmations specifically is because research shows that there is a positive correlation between high self-esteem and academic achievement. So, we felt that affirmations would be a great place to start. Other things that affirmations can do, it helps increase engagement in the learning environment, it allows students to be more likely to set challenging goals for themselves, higher grades, improved resiliency, and then fosters motivation within themselves. So, students will come down to an environment similar to how we do check-in, check-out, but we have a different space for them as our program is growing, and they will do a little bit of journaling to start their day. So, there's an example of a journal entry up there. A student answered, I am grateful for, she put my teacher. What would make today great? Me doing my job. And then, her positive affirmation was, I can make a difference. And then, they spend time talking with one of the adults that's down there, breaking down the different pieces of that, and really, how can that help me throughout my day and what pieces can I hold on to? And then, on the right is an example of another affirmation student. He chooses a new one every day and adds it to his list. I think he's on like his third sheet by now. And so, we talk about his affirmation for the day, and then actually go back, and a lot of times, we'll reread ones that they have already identified, just to really build up that positive self-talk repertoire that they have. And so, it's been a really positive thing for them to do that. So, some success that we have seen with the affirmations and the journaling, we will ask teachers typically about twice while the student is in the program, if they feel they've seen a positive change in the student. 100% of teachers have said yes, that they have seen a positive change with their student. And then, we kind of ask them to give us a rate of their improvement, from starting to improve, moderate improvement, up to major improvement. So, you can kind of see that graph there, that it's encouraging to see that all teachers are seeing a difference in their students' self-esteem. And then, I've got to go back. From the mouths of our Positive Affirmation students, we kind of wanted to hear directly from them as well, what they like about doing their affirmations and their journaling. So, here's a few responses we got. I like that I get to write out all of my affirmations, I get to write about my day, and it helps me to solve my problems. So, it's really filled a gap that we felt needed to be filled with our learners, and it's a growing program as we go along. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in and sharing about these great programs you guys have going on at Miller, really appreciate it. Board members, any questions or comments? Staff from Miller, Ms. Peterson?
I just had one question, I don't know if you guys are the ones to answer, but agreed with, you know, the previous comments, and I think that these programs really show that you guys are taking a solutions-based approach to, you know, just increased, you know, behaviors across the district. And I'm just wondering, are you guys sharing with your peers across all the other schools, like in these programs? And same with kind of at the secondary level with Jesse and his team, just wondering, are you guys the only ones, or have you had the opportunity to collaborate with other schools to see if these are programs that are working?
We do PLCs. Assistant principals do PLCs, and we share much of this information, what we're doing at PLCs. We've had sister schools come in and share with sister schools. We've also had the opportunity to go to other schools and do those pieces as well, so, and then, both of these team members also have PLCs where they talk about check-in, check-out. I believe, I might be wrong, that we're one of the school's few schools, or if not the only school right now, that currently does positive affirmations. So, we, it was just something that we felt was a niche for our students to fill this past year because of some of the depression, the anxiety, and that feeling of lost and loneliness. So, it was a piece that we added throughout the school year last year.
Thank you.
And I'm glad you did. I love that part in there. And I, when I saw it, I'm like, that's something staff should do every day across the district, and not just at BPS, but other places in the world, you know? The one student that you guys pulled out their example, Positive Affirmation, I can make a difference. You know, and what a cool way for a kid to have their thoughts and mindset their whole day. And some of the other ones, I was just kind of like, I read through the list they had over there. What was the other one? I get better every single day. I mean, just these great things. And I've done some research on some of these things before, too, where these Positive Affirmations, this journaling actually starts to change how we view our own life and the world around us. So, I think it's great you guys added that in, whoever grabbed that, and that should be spread. I mean, I'm really hoping that that's something that we can continue to share and carry across the district. Board members, anything else? Dr. Fosnot?
One, I just want to thank our team members that are up here today. Both these, just please understand, again, check-in, connect, check-in, check-out, every single kid needs to have an adult in their life, a positive, caring, compassionate adult. And some of us are blessed, because we get those pretty naturally, right? We get them in other places, not just in school. We get them with teams, we get them in church, we get them at home, we get them from a family member, right? But here, it's just being very intentional, that we have to reach out to some kids and make that special connection with them. And, yeah, it's an absolutely wonderful mission that we're doing that at all grade levels. So, I applaud my people. So, they're doing great work. Thank you.
Thanks very much for presenting tonight. Great focus on success. Dr. Fosnot, thanks for bringing everybody in from the schools and to your team, and I sure appreciate that. Item four on our agenda is public comment. The Board recognizes the central role that parents play in the education of their children and support active parent involvement in the educational process. The Board's practice of public comment reflects and aligns with policy BCBA and the spirit of its intent. For classroom issues, it's best to follow the chain of command, from your classroom teacher to the principal to the assistant superintendent, and ultimately, to the superintendent. For district issues, please reach out to Dr. Fosnot's office. If you do speak tonight, we simply ask you be responsible, be helpful, and be respectful. Our BPS students deserve to have adults model the expectations that we have for them. Groups are urged to select one spokesperson. Individuals will be limited no more than four minutes and will be notified with 30 seconds remaining to conclude their remarks. The Board will not debate issues as presented, but will take such matters under advisement. With that, please stand at the approached podium if you'd like to speak tonight. Seeing nobody approaching the podium, public comment is now closed. On to the agenda, item five is monitoring district operations. Dr. Fosnot?
Yeah, tonight, we will have Dr. Johnson come up and present to you our three, Personal Development Behavior. Good evening, Dr. Johnson.
Good evening, President Eastgate and members of the Board. Appreciate the opportunity to talk about a topic that often gets a lot of conversation. Director of Student Support Services, Danica Nelson here, and her team, and all the school psychologists, the counselors, the social workers, and other titles, along with all of our general ed teachers and our administrators, it's a collective effort. But again, that is founded upon the system. So, sometimes, we use that education ease, and we talk about MTSSB or PBIS, and really what that means is, what are our systems of support regarding behavior? And how can we collectively be really intentional about that work? And for today's focus on success, I think you see some of the systems and elements that we're putting into place, and that it's people, and it's all really based upon the relationships, the relationships with caring adults, and sometimes caring, just like when you go to the doctor and they say, hey, it's time for a booster vaccine or something like that, and you're like, I don't want that. Well, you know, this is what you need, you know, you know, don't want to get tetanus. So, I've experienced that before in terms of tough love from my parents, and that's a good thing sometimes. So, again, we're educators, we're going to use discipline to educate, but it doesn't mean that kids are bad, but they have behavior that's not acceptable, that we need to help educate them with. So, as we take a look at this with behavior, I think that we need to be, first of all, really proud and happy to live in a great town, have an amazing school district that has so many personnel led by Ms. Nelson and all those other folks that fall into that Student Support Service as we talked about. We continue to do, we marked ourselves making reasonable progress, and you'll see that pretty good data throughout when you look at this. We continue to work on making sure that we have consistency for major infractions. Again, it's how we document. We also know that there's a lot of social-emotional learning process and supports with reteaching and building up skills, running small groups. We have done a lot of good work, but part of the reason, as I visited with someone that talked about, there's a lot of history and tradition in our district. But part of the reason that we can become the best and stay the best is that we continue to invest and bring in people, such as Brian Meyer from Midwest PBS, who's really helping join us in that journey and helping share, this is best practices, and here's the next work, and as well as working through that. We also invest in our people, professional development, not only general ed teachers, but Student Support Services, our administrators. We, Brad and I have sent a lot of people over the years to Midwest PBS, and they come back really learning a lot. But we also have some people who have been in this work, and again, what's that next work and opportunities present locally. Dr. Don Kincaid is another individual who helps support our teams at the secondary. He has done a lot of work there, and again, that focus has been on tier-two, so you heard some of that. Functional behavioral assessments, really what's driving the behavior. So, that's, again, work that we want to continue to refine, how we can help support teams so that they can effectively identify and share that workload that's needed to help identify what students need most. As we go through the data, I'll just jump through a bunch of it here quickly, but there's a lot of green data, and what that- And what that's showing is that we're either meeting or exceeding. And when we have targets, people might say, well, why do you have a target at 85%? For systems work, they, the research shows that if you have 80 to 85% of your students achieving something, then your system can handle the supports such as the check and connector, check and check out. We can do that. My wife's school psychologist used to use a phrase that says, you can't triage your way out of poor core. Same with behavioral. You need to make sure that enough students are doing the right things so that you can meet the needs of those others. And so this is a high target and we're exceeding it. It in most cases are making the reasonable progress. But that's also a healthy thing for our system so that we can be responding to that. And realizing too, that even if we do a perfect job year after year, we have, you know, between 14 to 15% mobility. So we have new families, new students coming and moving into the district too. So again, we have to reculture that. Bullying is, is a phrase and we can talk about that another time, but we have some common definitions in the, here. But again, true bullying cases are investigated when reported and we take that very seriously. There's a process here. And just really taking a look at, again, most of our students do not experience that extreme incidents that occur. We take a look at the behavior incidents and we talk about that. Again, high percentages in the 90s at elementary, mid 90s. And you see at the middle school, there's been a little bit of dip over the years. A, having some COVID kind of effect, maybe perhaps some students there. But also we know middle school can tend to be one of those areas where a lot of stuff is handled more disciplinary office versus maybe teacher redirecting a younger kid time. Again, that's how you document some of that. And then high school, maybe wising up and figuring it out a little bit. There's a combination of those factors. But again, we always want our data to be accurate and be reported. So sometimes even when we see some increases, that's not a bad thing. It just means we're documenting that well and being able to have those conversations so we can support students. Same thing then when you get into in-school and out-of-school suspension. Again, we need to maintain the safety and security of all students and staff. So sometimes we have to apply disciplinary situation that removes a student for a day or several days from the typical setting that they approach. And sometimes that's housed in-school and sometimes that necessitates being out of the building at time. But what I'm really proud of is that our team always works to try to ensure that the learning continues and that we can support our students through that. So again, when people are taking a look, for example, you might see the out-of-school suspension. Again, 90-plus, high 90s, mid 90s of our students are not experiencing any form of suspension. I think that's a place to celebrate. An area that we did flag with the data where we saw some increases is restraint and seclusion. And you can look at some of the raw numbers and I know several of our excellence of behavior excellence, sorry, the personal excellence, looked at this behavior data a few weeks ago or a month ago. And we see an uptick in the numbers. But again, we're still talking about a relative percentage of 1.23% of our students who are experiencing this. It's still a very small relative number. Again, out of 14,137 students, only 174 experienced any of that. And then you dropped into some of the charts, you can see, again, there's heavy emphasis. Dr. Fosnot and Mr. Barnhart and Ms. Nelson and I, as well as others, have had a lot of conversations about where's that occurring and the resources and intentionality around the early grade levels there at elementary, that there's some need. And part of that is that we're teaching some things that maybe in the past, students would have come or had some of those social skills. But how do we do that intentionally in the work surrounding that? Doesn't mean that it all goes away, but again, it's decreasing as we see that. We also have examples, even at the high school, I won't call out individuals, but administrators talk about, where year to year, and Ms. Nelson knows this, sometimes there's some students that have some heavy needs. And we sometimes host students here that are in placement and they have some really intense needs. But as they work with our staff and we better program for them and work sometimes on medication and other elements, it helps them be successful. And you sometimes cannot believe the improvement or the, the reduction of restraint and seclusion that occurs there. So again, it's data that we have always worked with the BEA since several years ago about really trying to be transparent and have those honest conversations. Doesn't mean that that's not intense work. Doesn't mean that that doesn't affect teachers as well as student support service personnel and administrators that are really working with those students. So again, having that team figure out how can they program and best support the students there. Expulsions, it's never a great situation. Dr. Fosnot and I sit on almost all of those and we have a hearing panel that goes through there. But again, when we have expulsions, it's done for the safety of 14 or 1,000 other students and 100 staff members that are there. Those aren't taken lightly. And again, being really proud of that we don't give up on kids' education. There's still a path forward that we can figure out what we can do to allow for that student who will likely re-enter our building either later that year or the following year. So again, some things to be proud of even when you're dealing with some sticky situations. Last, we talked a little bit just about how students view conflict. And again, self-reported, but we have high percentage of students that feel like there's not incidents there. And again, lastly, we end where we see most students are behaving appropriately in that tier-one discipline and not having any major issues. When you're talking about in the high and mid 90s, that means that when you send your child to our schools, they're probably coming to a safe environment where they're connected with adults, connected with their peers for the most part. And if not, we're there to try to help support those needs that we can do to make them feel like they belong and they feel connected so that they're able to learn their best. So at this point, I'd stand for any questions.
Board members, questions for Dr. Johnson? Ms. Preskey?
I don't know if this is the right report to collect this data, but do we collect the number of assaults on teachers or staff? And is that reflected somewhere if it's not dealing with student behaviors?
Yeah, we have some incident reports that we do collect. I don't believe that we, well, I know that, sorry. I don't believe that we have that as a line in here, but we do collect that data and look at that. That's part again. Anyone can fill out that incident report, no matter your role. And we share that periodically with staff so that they know how to fill that out. Sometimes those result in the restraint and seclusions, obviously. But again, that doesn't mean that each of those restraint and seclusions was tied to necessarily an incident at that level.
Right. I, I, I kind of draw, drew that same conclusion as well, that it would probably be the result of that or be involved in that, but probably wasn't necessarily involved in each one. But I guess I-
Do you have a ballpark, Dan? Because I'd say it's probably far less than the- Yep, thank you. Yep, so just for the public and those who couldn't hear on microphone, Ms. Nelson was recounting that Becky Labella, our director of safety coordinator, she would take a look at reviewing those incidents. And again, working with administration and if there's any patterns identifying that. And sometimes it involves the student outcomes. But we would definitely take a look at that periodically and when we see trends, we talk about that.
Thank you. Mr. Lee?
Thank you, Mr. President. So Dr. Johnson, when we look at this and we see the percentage without incidents, what does that mean per se?
Means that, for example, if 95% of the kids have, don't have an incident, that means that they haven't been flagged to have been someone that's received in-school suspension. 97% of our students have not received out-of-school, have not gotten a referral. So again, we sometimes hear about the behavior or those that are needing to be restrained. Again, that's a much smaller population than most of our students coming to school, not experiencing that.
Thank you. And that's kind of how I read it. I think the thing to keep in mind as a, as a district and as a, as a system is that it's not 96%. Even though there's 96%, say, without incident, that doesn't mean they aren't affected by an incident. And that's kind of what we've always talked about on this board is there's a small percentage. By and large, we have great kids and, and don't have a lot of problems. But there can be a small percentage that are, let's just say, repeat offenders and we're having trouble gaining traction and, and that can interrupt the educational process. And I think for me, that's, that's what I worry most about, you know, is how we are empowering our classroom teachers to be able to manage their classrooms. And what are, you know, the, the consequences that are, that are in place? And are they, are they strong enough? And do teachers and buildings feel supported? So that's one thing I, I continually want to focus on. And I'm not sure this, this report necessarily grasps that. I do think there's a lot of really good things going on around MTSSB and a lot of things we're implementing in our schools. And, and like we've always said, we can, we can always get better, you know? So appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Ms. Peterson?
Thanks, President Eastgate. And I, I think that's the, that's the balance when I read a report like this or hear the focus on success. I, I think that it's just continually both amazing to me to think of how many different ways that we've got those solutions for some of those, those behaviors that are just a very small portion of, of those students that are, that make up our entire student population. But also I think it does become something that we kind of hear at the board level and at, and at administration level. So I'm, I'm glad to see that some of these numbers have gone down, but then I'm not sure if that's always what, what the perception is or what is maybe felt by continually having to kind of go back to the drawing board to have those solutions about how to meet the needs of those maybe very small percentage. It's increasingly having to get more creative and, and more programming or additional aids that are, that are maybe harder to find. So I think that's the, the balance. This is a good report and I think that we would accept it, you know, as making really good progress. But I think that, that, that feeling or that struggle that we hear sometimes out at the, you know, the school visits and things, that, that has been a continual struggle, struggle and hasn't gotten away. So I, I sometimes it's that, it's that balancing act of getting a, a great report that has lots of good data in it for the majority of our students, but also recognizing that there's still a lot of challenges that require continued and additional resources always. So I don't know, I'm, I'm constantly conflicted with that a little bit when hearing some of the stories.
Dr. Fosnot?
Yeah, I just want to thank Dr. Johnson for the report. And I would echo, I guess, so Ms. Peterson's comments and Mr. Lee's comments is, it is a good report. But remember, the report just monitors our systems. And it's just trying to give us a status for system health. As Dr. Johnson mentioned, if you'd go to any of those and you'd find that 30% of our kids were being suspended or in-school, out-of-school, or 30% of our kids were engaging in major behaviors. Okay, now we have to go back and realign, like, what are we doing within the system? So this tells us that the system is relatively healthy. But I would echo, we still have work to do. I mean, this in no way, shape or form should tell us, my team or the general public that there's still not work to do. I would tell you that we still see gaps in the services we're able to provide our most needy kids in relation to behavior. I would, Ms. Nelson's sitting in the audience and she's going to shake her head up. I won't even look at her, she's going to shake her head yes on this. I need more counselors, I need more social workers, I need more psychologists, I need more special ed staff that are trained for emotional disturbance behavior. All those I need to address some of the gaps to Mr. Lee's point. We're still, that 4% is still affecting the 96%. The other thing I would say is, to your point, it, it, yes, we have a lot of kids who are doing the right thing every day they come to school. But I would tell you without, the report looks good, but I will tell you 100% I trust my teachers. When I'm in front of teachers, I trust what they tell me. And it was just last week when I heard anecdotally from our teachers, behaviors are escalating and getting tougher. They're feeling it. So I don't think the report by itself tells everything, right? Again, it's a system analysis. It's not maybe the reality that's in some of our classrooms and our hallways. So I think we have to be cognizant of that. You can see a little bit with restraint and seclusion numbers. Okay, those are, those took a significant jump. I don't think we can ignore those, that some of our kids are extreme enough that they're having, we have to engage them physically. That's not something we want to do, but we're being thrust into doing it. I would challenge you that not only within BPS, but within our community, we have significant gaps on the continuum of care for kids with behavior needs. I think schools had a meeting today about future legislation for the upcoming session. And what was one of the big talk, talking points? Schools all around our state are being challenged to provide services that really are clinical. They're medical, clinical, therapeutic services. And schools are having to do it because there is a gap in services in our communities. So when we can't provide that, we can't find that support in our community, we're being thrust to, to accommodate that because, you know what? Kids between the age of seven and 16 are directed by law to come to school. They come to school. And I think a fellow administrator said the other day, you know, kid goes to residential treatment because of therapeutic needs and because of their significant behaviors, within two, three days, they're out of that therapeutic session. And guess where they come back to? They come back to school because they have to. And I think that's a challenge we still need to address within all schools and BPS is one of them. And I would tell you one thing that you will see from my team very shortly and you know about RenewEd. It's a wonderful program to address therapeutic needs for some of our most significant kids that just need behavioral interventions and support for our secondary students. In our metro, and I will add Mandan into that, we need to start talking about that for elementary-age students. Day treatment, how, what would it be a day, day treatment type setting? So they could provide, receive some therapeutic care while getting an education and still going home tonight to be with their most important teacher, their parents, but then come back to us in a safe, safe environment. We need to start having a more earnest conversation, which we've already started, on how to bring that forward. So to address some of your concerns, I think, Mr. Lee.
Thank you, that. And I, you mentioned the gaps of continuum care. Dr. Johnson and I were having that same conversation just earlier today. And just to summarize, you know, board members, thank you for sharing your thoughts and opinions on this because I think this is a big one. I think we can all agree, we'll have a chance for a motion here in a moment, that the report itself is good. We do believe that our office is trying to put together systems that are helping report back the things that are happening in our classrooms. But as both Mr. Lee and Ms. Peterson brought up, well, to summarize, you know, we support students that have great need. I think our, our board does. But I think you're hearing from this board as well is that we're very big on supporting our educators to be able to handle classroom management and giving them tools or supports. And, and maybe that is counselors, social workers. I don't, again, you know, we trust our leadership to help us make some of those decisions where it's going to really affect and impact our educators as well in the classroom. So, sorry, Mr. Lee, you have a follow-up?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I, I would like to, I do think this, this, you know, one thing we always talk about is recruitment and retention. And I do think this is a big piece of the puzzle too, because I think teacher burnout is accelerating earlier in the year from a number of administrators that I've talked to. And that they, they've kind of hit that, that wall, so to speak, before Thanksgiving, which normally comes at Thanksgiving. And it's just, it's not something that is a BPS problem, it's universal. And I think you could find this in any district in the United States. It's a societal problem. We recognize that. I do think we're doing a fantastic job. I think this is a great report. I think we're ahead of the curve. And I think, you know, we're challenging our, our system to, to be on the forefront in many different areas. You think of CTE and those things. But I'm challenging us to, to be on the forefront of, of addressing behaviors. Because I believe more than anything, if, if we get ahead of behaviors, we move the needle faster on student achievement than we can in any other area. So I appreciate all the work that is being done, that's being shown us tonight. And just would challenge us to, to, to keep thinking outside the box and looking for ways to make our, our classrooms and buildings more manageable. And with that, Mr. President-
Please.
I would move that we approve R3, personal development behavior. Let me get up there, my apologies. As making reasonable progress as presented.
And I would second.
We have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Scher?
Lee?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Preskey?
Yes.
Hager?
Yes.
Eastgate?
Yes. Motion passes, thank you. And thank you, Dr. Johnson, for the presentation this evening. Yes. Motion passes. Thank you. And thank you, Dr. Johnson, for the presentation this evening. On the agenda, item six, matters reserved for Board of Action. We're actually, we got six A, R2.1 Academic Achievement ELA. And we're going to actually start tonight with Mrs. Peterson presenting.
Thanks, everybody. As, as part of the Learning Excellence Committee and as kind of the board appointee for that committee, we were charged with really looking at our 2.1 Academic Achievement ELA and much the same as what we just talked about in some of these, you know, in a lot of these coherent governance policies, we're, we're looking at kind of system health and, and overall just some of the results that we're getting as, as an entire district. And so we tackled this particular indicator for a couple of different reasons. One, I think that there was just a, a notable need to maybe shift from sort of just an ELA, which is a, a teacher speak for English Language Arts, to maybe an overall concept of just literacy when we're just expecting academic outcomes. Overall, we know that ELA doesn't just happen in an English classroom or in an English subject. It, we expect literacy outcomes really K-12 and beyond. We expect there to be a focus on literacy. And then also then, how are we assessing that, that all encompassing standard? And so the, there was some really nice, rich discussion in the Learning Excellence Committee about not only changing some semantics with the ELA to literacy and, and then therefore some of the wording kind of throughout the entire policy. And, and board members, you have this, the actual printout in a copy, just so you can see some of those, some of those changes and some of the reason why. And I think folks at home also see some of the, the new, the new terminology and even the redlined indicators so that you can see that although there was a lot of, there's a lot of red on those changes, it really was more to make a more readable report. And to be in the second half was when we think about the assessment changes and I'll, I'll let Dr. Fosnot even speak more intelligently about the, the actual need for the specifics. But I, we, we felt that there needed to be maybe a vendor agnostic, that even though the report, when we actually see the results come through, there will be consistent tools at all levels. We didn't want to, in the results policy, be beholden to any one tool because we already have seen changes kind of at the state level for the older kids when we think about ACT and the new summative assessment called NDA+. That's happening, that's already happened and needed a change. But then we also see a need all the way through down to our, our lower kids and looking at early literacy and, and K-1, too. There's going to constantly be a, a need to look at different tools that are assessing at that level. And so rather than kind of stick to any, any one indicator, there'll still be results reported with those different assessments and, and each of our esteemed superintendents will share, when, when they share those results, they'll explain what those assessments are. But I think the committee overall thought that we could combine those indicators in, in certain reports so that it would make a little bit more sense. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Fosnot to, to walk through any other specifics that I may have missed, but that was sort of the, the general consensus of the, of the committee. And then just a reminder to the public, when we talk about that learning excellence, there's definitely a, I'm the board appointee, but there are parents that are on that. There are elementary, secondary, middle school, a lot of educators on that so that we've got a robust membership to that committee that are kind of informing some of these changes. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Johnson, Dr. Fosnot.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Okay, so I'll just explain the documents because I think this is a little bit of a dialogue as we go through because you might have questions as we get to certain parts and I'm, I'm very open with that. First of all, you have the document that was on the screen and that was Ms. Peterson's eyes' best attempt to try to explain to you a little background to the changes we're making, okay? You have the redline copy, which was in the board packet, so you can see the actual adds and deletes that we're making. And the one that I'll probably reference the most, which is also in your packet, is the monitoring report, kind of so you can see what we intend to show you in the monitoring report. It's not the whole thing. It's not the cover page. It just goes, starts with like page five on the front, okay? So I guess to just hit the first one, why literacy? We just, we made a recommendation, the committee agreed, that ELA is pretty narrow in its scope and this is a public consumable document, right? So let's broaden the scope into something that's more understandable. When you talk about being literate and being literate with English language, that seems to be more grasp, easier to grasp for our public. And ELA is, does get very narrow in its scope where literacy does cross more boundaries even though we're assessing it specifically with, with very finite assessments. We thought literacy was more comprehensive. So that was our first change. Then before I get into the indicators, the assessment changes, as Ms. Peterson mentioned, we were talking last year about the ACT is no longer the state assessment for 11th graders, okay? We as BPS made a decision that we're going to keep that assessment in place for 11th graders, but we're no longer necessarily comparing to all 11th graders in the state. The state, on the state assessment, it says North Dakota Academic Progress of Learning and Understanding of Students NDA+ is the new test. And DPIs changed that statewide. So that's, we thought, we really didn't have a, a desire to, I mean, we had a desire, but it's like we have to change our indicators because the states changed the test. So you're going to see that in some of the changes tonight, okay? We talk about the ACT because we're keeping it. Then on the multiple assessment side on the back of the discussion page, thank you, Mr. Barnard, you can see we're using several different interim assessments that are required by law in 15.1, 21, 17.1. So in kindergarten, we use AmesWeb for interim assessment, okay? In grades one through five, we still use the MAP. And six through eight and nine through 10, we use STAR because it's required by law. We just brought that present assessment system into some of our indicators as well because we thought, to Ms. Peterson's point, your indicators shouldn't be test specific. They should just take into account all tests that we're giving kids so we can broaden the scope of what we provide you. We want to give you more information, not less, okay? So if you, I will take those concepts and walk you through these individually. So if you go to your redline document, I'm going to take you to indicator one, okay? And if you want, that's on, hold this up for the audience, that's on this reporting document. You can see indicator one and a table. It's mimicking your monitoring report, okay? So we are recommending a change indicator one to say students in grades three through eight and 10 who are advanced or proficient on the NDA+ because we changed the test. So the state doesn't have the NDSA anymore. It's the A+. ELA section will meet or exceed the state performance. Subtle change on that, not a lot, but we're adding 10 because we don't have that necessarily 11th grade, everybody across the state taking the ACT. And it, the 10th grade is required by state statute that all 10th graders take the NDA+ So we're going to do three through eight and 10 as required by law for the NDA+. And then on the, the reporting side, the bottom table, in the past, you've got every grade, every grade reported with a target. And it's one of the things that we talked about in our retreat this summer is maybe looking at one target of the sum. So we would look at, your target would actually be in the bull box showing the sum. That's on this page, okay? So your target would more look like we're better than the state as a sum than we are just by grade. Does that make sense? Okay? I'm looking for affirmation on being a teacher today. Okay. Indicator two and indicator three, which are also in your manual or in your monitoring report document, are no changes. We're really, the only thing we've done, instead of reporting 10 years, we're only going to report four and that's just to be simplify the report. So indicator two and three, no changes because we're going to continue to still provide the ACT for 11th graders. So we'll be able to compare them to the state. The state data might change, I'll be honest, because less, less kids are taking the ACT, but we still think it's important in BPS to provide the ACT, okay? So I'm going to jump to indicator four. Students in grades, and we're going to expand that. Instead of doing two through eight, we want to represent to you K through 10. We'll show continuous improvement toward attainment of the identified target indicating the percentage of students at grade level. And you used to say just in the MAP because that's where the MAP was given in grades two through eight. So now we're going to report to you, as kind of you can see on here, we're going to report to you AmesWeb data for grades K-1. We're going to report MAP data to you in grades two through eight and then we'll report STAR data to you in nine, 10, okay? Makes sense?
Makes sense.
Okay? And we won't do it by grade. We'll do it by section. So we'll sum up those kids, those kids within that section will sum up so your target applies to one large group instead of each grade group because we know how those demographics work, okay? Indicator five, we'll do the same thing. Show continuous improvement, grades K through 10 will show continuous improvement toward attainment of the identified target indicating the percentage of students meeting their expected growth target on a reading assessment. So again, if you go to indicator five, this is your expected growth target indicator you've always had, but now we're going to do it in more grade bands across three assessments instead of one. Does that make sense? Okay? Hopefully we're giving you more information and it'll, you'll actually, I think one of the benefits of this is you're going to get a little bit of early childhood indicator as well about how your system's working because it doesn't wait till grade two. You're going to get K-1 data now, okay? If they're meeting their expected growth targets. By the way, on indicator four and five, we haven't changed the target. It's still 65% and 55%. Those, we didn't change the target. We still want that number of kids to meet the target, okay? Indicator six, that was your subgroup target, remember, where you look at performance on the map by subgroup? So we changed indicator six to say, again, students in grades K through 10. We're going to expand the number of kids we're looking at. We'll show continuous improvement toward attainment of identified targets indicating the percentage of students within subgroups meeting their expected targeted growth on a reading assessment. So now again, this one, we're probably making your report larger, not smaller. We're going to do subgroups by AmesWeb, MAP and STAR so you can see performance based on subgroup. The committee did think about going down to, we actually asked a question, could we go to like two subgroups and only report two? I will tell you very strongly that that committee did not agree with that. They said every subgroup's important. How dare you, Dr. Fosnot, just pick two subgroups? So they were very much like, don't just pick a couple of subgroups or two or three. We want to see all subgroups reflected in this report so we can monitor their performance. So that's the way we left it. Questions yet? Okay? Indicator seven and eight, which you used to have, were about the pre-ACT. And since we don't give that anymore, it's not, we're giving different assessments to our kids, we needed to remove those two. So we took those indicators out, okay? Old indicator nine, which is new indicator seven, if you want to call it that, is students in grades K through eight will show continuous improvement toward attainment of the identified reporting target of a 2.5B in coursework. This is where we match how you're doing on the assessment with how you're doing in class, okay? So 2.5B elementary performance reporting, B would be middle school, high school performance reporting. And we're just going to give that data to you across all grade bands of how they're meeting or what percentage of kids are meeting that threshold, 2.5 or B, depending on what, if they're elementary or secondary division, okay? We'll sum those up as well. So you have a middle school number, you have a high school number and you have an elementary number, okay? And then lastly, indicator 10, this is the one that's in your ELA, your math, your social studies, your, your science, where you have like 50% of kids will take courses, more courses that are required for graduation. And I would tell you, our recommendation is to pull this out of this report, even though it's an ELA indicator, we would like to take all those and put those into R4 Personal Development Community Ready because we think it's better represented in that report and put those indicators in that results policy so you can see them there in one shot versus in this one where you say, hey, we're doing all these things and it just seems like it kind of stands on its own and we've had questions about it. So we'll put it into the community ready because we have some additions we'd like to make to R4. So this is a lot. I respect that. If you have questions, I think Mrs. Peterson will answer them all.
Thank you both, Dr. Fosnot and Board Member Peterson, for the work on all of this. Board members? Yeah, Ms. Pressky.
Just a clarification. So if we're making the move from ELA to literacy and then I see in the indicators, we're still using the ELA language. So is that an oversight or is that deliberate or?
It's deliberate because that's the test. That's the ELA assessment.
Any other questions from the board? Ms. Peterson? Oh, Ms. Peterson?
I was just going to add to that piece because I think that's a really good, good point. It's, it, it really is all encompassing, but when you think of just, if you look at each indicator separately where there are some specific assessments that, you know, are called ELA or whatever, but then there are other components like kind of throughout that are going to maybe overall extend an information about whether our students are literate. So it's, it's, it's semantics, but I think that it, it'll end up kind of showing a broader picture.
Mr. Hager?
Yeah, just a quick question. So formerly indicator 10 is going to move to?
R4.
R4, okay. So then what, when R4 comes around, we'll have provisions, red lines of that as well?
That's correct, Mr. Hager. We will, we're working on that one too. I think that's in the queue. We have, what, five, five of these that are in the queue that we're working on in different committees and stuff? So we would like to bring that one to you with this one included. If you're taking it out of here, we'll make sure to include it there. Does that address your question? Okay.
And Dr. Fosnot, in regards to that question, I think what indicator 10 is, that's the one where I, not only just the wording about ELA coursework, but this is the one that we always ask questions about, like if we're asking in every single area to increase by a certain percentage and, you know, at some point you, you run out of different courses that they can take. You know, we want CTE to grow, science to grow, math to grow. So I think not only just should it move to a different results policy, but really look at the, the what are we, what are we measuring and what target do we want to set? You know, do we want to just have lots of opportunities? Do we want to see an increase? Like I'm, I'm not, I don't know the answer to that, but that's, I think, what we always kind of see whenever that one comes up on any of these, these indicators is just that how, how can they all grow when students are choosing, have so many amazing choices to choose from?
Thank you for that, Ms. Peterson. Board members, any other comments? Or what are your wishes following the recommendation from the district?
And if you don't mind, my recommendation is if you're okay, that you would approve this for first reading, then you'll come back later to second reading next time.
What are the wishes of the board? Mr. Lee?
Mr. President, thank you and thank you to Board Member Peterson. I think there's a lot of really good work in here. It's always a little tough to change, right? When you see so many, so much red, it's like, ah, but that's good. That's what we want, right? And it, it all makes sense to me and why we're going this way and I agree with it all. I, I think the only thing I would question, and I don't think it's anything we, we can really tackle tonight or just, just the targets and, and I think that's why these, this, all these documents in coherent governance are, are living documents and we can change them in the future. These changes that I see tonight, I'm very comfortable with and I would move that we approve the revised coherent governance results policy, R2.1 Academic Achievement ELA and the revised supporting indicators as presented for the first reading.
I'll second.
We have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Scher.
Peterson?
Yes.
Pressky?
Yes.
Hager?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Eastgate?
Yes. Motion passes. Item 6B, Board Member School Visit Updates, and I do believe we have several board members presenting an update tonight. So whoever's light is on can go first. Mr. Lee?
What? I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. President. You caught me off guard and you caught me with my light on. Great. Happy to go first. I, I visited with Principal Fladlin at Moses Elementary, which back in the day, this kind of caught me off guard. I guess I've been keeping up, but it used to be home to the Mavericks and the Marauders, at least in 1980. Now it's home.
Now it's home of the Stars. So it was, it was great to visit there. I think one of the Mavericks back in my day was none other than Mr. Steve Feeney, who was a Star at Moses. Moses serves around 400 students, which, when you think about all of our elementaries, is pretty average population for an elementary school. However, the school is anything but average. They have a remarkable staff that serves some pretty incredible kids. My visit reminded me how different and diverse our elementary buildings are and how each one has different obstacles to overcome. And it's true, they're all very, very different. So I want you to do this. Imagine, if you will, a child living below the poverty level, English is a second language, comes from a single parent household, and is also autistic. Now imagine if that child with four strikes working against their ability to learn is also emotionally disturbed. It doesn't sound real. It sounds made up. Like, it's not even possible, but I can tell you, this situation is something our people in our buildings are faced with every single day. Eyewitnesses firsthand at Moses. Our professionals faced with every imaginable circumstances, through skill and creativity, find ways to move the education needle in the life of every child. Every child that's put before them. And it's beyond commendable. It's beyond amazing. What it is, the work our people do each day, what it is, is nothing short of miraculous. Principal Fladlin shared that around sixty percent of their kids are at or below the poverty level. Sixty percent. Because of the diverse needs, they employ a systems approach that starts with teamwork. Nothing happens without teamwork, and he feels they simply can't afford not to work together. Moses is thriving because his people are not just working with each other, they are working for each other. And that's what makes a difference. About eighteen percent of the students at Moses speak English as a second language. And the school serves as a pilot for the school within a school model building on initiatives started under Dr. Hornbacher when he served as principal. They have a skill center for tier two and tier three programming. And I believe they have the largest Title I budget, which certainly helps them do what they do. But I'd point out, they are also operating without an assistant principal, which has its challenges. Principal Fladlin feels much of the success that happens at Moses is because of its highly struck, it's highly structured, which leads to being highly predictable for those kids. And it allows them to be firm in their expectations. He speaks very highly of all his staff, and it really does take, it just was really impressed on me, it really takes everybody. It takes a village, right? He speaks highly of all his staff, teachers, social workers, special ed, title staff. All in his words are top-notch people. And part of his village at Moses, the custodial staff, he believes are the best in town. It was just, I can't really capture what it was for me to see the work they do, because it was so different than any of the other elementaries I've been in. There are similarities between some of our Title I schools, other Title I schools and Moses, but just maybe it was the day I was there and the kids I saw, it was just, it really made an impression on me about how incredible our people are and what they do every day. So it was a great day. And I'll leave you with this. My visit also reminded me of how amazing our public school system really is in this country, in this state and in this city. I still believe public schools are what raises the tide and that's what lifts all boats. It's been one of the distinctives that have made our country great. Public schools are what support and embody the promise of America, a place where every child has the opportunity to be whatever they want to be. And schools like Dorothy Moses work really, really hard to make good on that promise. So it was, it was a fantastic visit.
Thanks very much, Mr. Lee. Appreciate that. School visit update from Mr. Hager.
Thanks, President Eastgate. I'm actually going to have some overlap with what Mr. Lee just said. So I had a visit to Northridge, and speaking of Mr. Lee, who's an alumni from Northridge, a little disappointed to learn that the superstar nickname was not after Mr. Lee. I just assumed. So another lesson I learned at Northridge Visit, if they, this is for other board members to keep in mind, if they ask you to come thirty minutes later than what you had scheduled for an assembly, you're going to be put on display. So, so, so that happened to me. As the kids affectionately call her Miss E, the assistant principal there, texted me, asked if I could come thirty minutes late. So I did. So my visit wrapped up with me onstage playing this or that game, very similar to our opening day with the coin flip that Mr. Eastgate did. However, this time it was me choosing different Thanksgiving food. Was not ready for 400-plus kids screaming when I selected turkey over ham. So that shocked me a little bit.
Screaming in agreement?
Oh, yeah. They, they, I picked all the traditional stuff along with all the kids, so there was a lot, a lot of screaming in agreement. It was, it was fun. So I was literally onstage in front of a bunch of kids, which I suspected was going to happen. So Principal Mertz and I, we had, we had a nice conversation, kind of a broad list of topics. I mean, we talked about something that's on our agenda yet tonight, you know, the transportation, you know, changes and bell time changes, what that may look like to school safety, to us as board members and ways we can support her work there. So, you know, having that, having had the original visit, one thing that actually came to me this weekend, and it ties back to my visit. So I was at Barnes &amp; Noble, and I ran into my first grade teacher, Ms. Olson, who's a retired, retired teacher, she's been retired for some time. And she was talking, just as Mr. Lee did, about, you know, the challenges that teachers and educators have to face this day and age, and how she doesn't think, you know, she could handle those things. So I started talking about my Northridge visit with her and was telling her how immediately after school started, Northridge saw thirty new students. So the first couple of weeks, they were having to address the needs of thirty students, finding placements for them, on top of the additional challenge that a lot of them were EL students. So then you had those language differences to have to deal with. So at Northridge alone, there's thirteen different languages that are spoken. So of some of these new students that they were having to deal with, one of the languages, Fula, which is kind of an African French language, Google Translate doesn't even have. So they're trying to, to work with those students and get them to just understand English at all. And now, kind of along Mr. Lee's lines, the connections that some of these educators make with these students, so you have one of these students who can't speak English, there's no way to communicate with them through an app. But this one kindergartner in particular had such a connection with their teacher through, through unspoken language, because really, they couldn't communicate otherwise. She fell down the playground, skinned her knee. So aides and staff went over to try to help her with her skinned knee, and she couldn't understand him, ran right past him, ran down the hall, ran to kindergarten room to find her kindergarten teacher, who fortunately eats lunch in her classroom. She'd only let her kindergarten teacher mend her wound that day. And that kindergarten teacher, Ms. Benz, just thinking of kind of the trust that she built in that moment. You know, so I was talking to Ms. Olson at Barnes &amp; Noble there, then her comment back after I shared that story with her is just, not only the educators at Northridge, but educators across the district, how they go above and beyond to make those kids feel safe and valued so that they can learn. So hearing that story, you know, hearing an ex educator, or I should say retired educator, you know, give that kind of praise, it's, it's, to Mr. Lee's point, there's a lot of great things that are going on, going on in this district, and it was, it was a great visit.
Thank you, Mr. Hager, and thank you to Mrs. Olson for helping you get through the first grade and at this table with us tonight. I believe that. So thank you, Ms. Olson. Ms. Peterson?
All right. Thanks. You know, we did have, we did have three this week, and I just went today, so I could have easily, and I just wanted to shout out to our, to Principal Haugen and the Liberty team. I got a gift today, and I was going to wear it over my clothes, but that probably wouldn't have been as professional. But I was greeted at Liberty with, not only by Joy and Carrie, the amazing kind of secretarial staff who greet everybody that walks in the door, but also by Riker and Macy. And I really appreciate it, because actually, Principal Haugen had another meeting, and I kind of came in, just told Joy that I was here, and then there were two kids sitting, waiting their turn, and I assumed, you know, for the next step. And actually, Joy asked, so I sat down, and then she asked the kids if they were waiting. They're like, no, I think we're supposed to actually take, Mrs. Peterson, and I was behind the pillar and I walked up, and then we immediately kind of went on our way, and the kids totally took the lead, and Principal Haugen met with me later. And so I was just, I'm always impressed with that strategy, to have the kids take us around, and they know their school, and I just thought that was a really good use of their time and of Principal Haugen's time as well. Riker and Macy are fifth grade students in Mrs. Carr's class, and so they were very proud to kind of just show me around. And I'd been at Liberty a couple of different times. In fact, we had a community forum, I think, last year at around this time, with a lot more snow on the ground, I might add. But, but that, so I had been there, but it's really cool to see it through a student's eyes. So they, of course, stopped and really emphasized kind of their celebration wall, where they get their, they call them power slips, and so lots of different proud moments where students are recognized. I mean, I think that just connects with the things that we saw earlier today about the behavioral supports, those positive interactions. They have awards called like the Silver Spoon Award and the Golden Whistle and the Trashcan Award, and all of these that are really celebrating different classrooms, different students for key moments in each month. And so that was really nice to be able to see that. We couldn't not, not leave Liberty without me taking a peek into Mrs. Lengang's classroom. She's a first grade teacher at Liberty, but I have a special place in my heart, because she taught two of my, my boys when they were kindergarten students. So she's moved on to the first grade over at Liberty, but got to give her a hug and a shout out. And what I loved about when we walked into her classroom, and, you know, she and I were hugging and telling the kids, but they couldn't help but keep calling out Riker and Macy, who were their fifth grade mentors. And I just thought it was a really cool moment. And they were in the middle of literacy, speaking of that. And one thing that I've had a couple, you know, I have a former experience in ELA, and I've had several teachers reach out, because there was a new curriculum called Wit and Wisdom presented to all elementary teachers, which, for a lot of us that are not in the education world, it might just seem like, yay, we get new curriculum at the beginning of the year, but that is an immense amount of work for educators and all of the instructional coaching staff, the district staff who are supporting those teachers, but also just those teachers who are navigating a brand-new literacy curriculum so that more students can read. It's just, it's a burden on educators. So all that we just talked about was supporting all the behaviors. It's also supporting through new curriculum changes. I talked to Mrs. Haugen afterwards, and we talked about that, because I know that that's been a challenge, but she also said that the buy-in is getting there, and they've thought of some really creative ways. I was still on the tour, but later on, Haley told me about something that she's calling the Liberty Learning Lollapalooza, where it was, you know, a lot of times when we talk about just these amazing educators, we add a lot to educators' plates all the time, and we don't always take away. And so one of the things that Haley was really brainstorming with her leadership team is, how do we give more time to these educators to really dig into this new curriculum, not only as a, as a PLC? But she thought of this opportunity to really get those educators and some time with the curriculum. They're right next to a business in town, Knutson Homes, and so she, she basically, as a leadership team, they invited speakers from the community, parents, they kind of used all of their things, you know, their PTO, and as an opportunity for those teachers to just go dig into the curriculum. They had a whole day of learning and two hours just of time to really dig into that, while kids were exposed to other professions and other speakers. So just a really creative way of using their time, and where the teachers really could not, not just get like time that they always get, you know, to assess and meet with each other. It was a two hours specifically geared towards that. So that was a really cool, cool thing that they did. But I got to see the wit and wisdom in action in Mrs. Lengang's class. You know, we went throughout the way, throughout the tour, got to see them kind of setting up lunch, talking through all of the different classrooms, and then got back to Principal Haugen, and it was just really nice for Riker and Macy to take me around. I think that as I sat down with the principal, and really, it was timely, because we're also going to talk about the transportation studies, so we talked a lot about that. And I, and I think that really was a nice time to kind of couple with some of the, some of the challenges, but also some of the, some of the successes. And I think that I'm excited to kind of hear just some of the things that we talk about in the board, when you get that opportunity to sit down with those principals and really hear from their perspective. It informs a lot of what the comments that we make here, the things that we bring up in the committees, and then, of course, in the retreats, when we have more candid conversations just about budget decisions and so on. So we talked a lot about aides and, you know, making sure to really think through how we're working there. And then, and then really just wanting to give a shout out to the fact that also, I think Liberty just became HRS Level One certified, so they're going to be recognized. And so I talked about with Solheim, that they're kind of going through those pieces. All the schools are kind of doing it at the, at the level that makes sense to them. And I always, I really appreciated Principal Haugen's like system approach, that all of these things kind of go together, and she's really being strategic with that piece and that trust and communication with the families that she has. So all in all, a really great day today, really impressed with Liberty's ability to have that positive connection with their families, with their students, and then, of course, just really building in. She highlighted the fact that this was one, you know, Liberty was, is now seven years old, which seems crazy when we think about some of the different growth that we've had. But this was, they maintain the same amount of staff and just that, that ability to have a similar growth. And then they do have an assistant principal, and they thank the board for that piece of it. This was their first year with that assistant principal. They are just about to cross the 500-student threshold, and so just a lot of, a lot of growth in that area and that they're kind of navigating to do that. So appreciated my time there today, and thanks, Principal Haugen, for meeting with me.
Thanks very much, Board Member Peterson. And what was the Lala?
I had to write it down. Liberty Learning Lala, Liberty Learning Lollapalooza.
Who doesn't want to be a part of that?
I was like, I want to, I want to be a part of that. And they're looking for their next, their next two-hour time slot, come in right before Christmas break, so for the next module for Wit and Wisdom, so.
That's great.
Very cool.
Thanks very much, all board members, for reporting tonight and sharing about the Board Member School Visit updates. It's, it's great to hear, you know, you guys get a chance to come in, we all do when we give our updates, but to share a little bit about what our administrators are thinking and how they see things, we get to witness firsthand educators and the kid stuff. And I catch those little nuggets in there, even about the fifth graders mentoring the younger classmen and things like that that are going on in the schools. I hope people don't miss those little details that come through in the updates, because I think it's really important. It's more than just a board member meeting and talking to a principal, there's so much more going on in those school walls. So thank you so much for highlighting those things. We have a lot of great, great heroes and highlights to bring up at these updates, so thank you. Item seven is the consent agenda. What are the wishes of the board? Mr. Hager?
I'll move to adopt the consent agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Share, the roll, please.
Presky?
Yes.
Hager?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Eastgate?
Yes. Motion passes. Item made is the superintendent's report, and actually, in a curveball tonight, we are not going to start with Dr. Fosnot with his own report. He has handed that over to start anyway, batting lead off Mr. Josh Hager. He has handed that over to start anyway, batting lead off Mr. Josh Hager on item eight A, the bell time presentation.
Thanks, Mr. Eastgate. I'll just be brief before I turn over to Dr. Fosnot and let him run kind of through the bell, bell time presentation. Just kind of a quick background in, in how it came to the Operational Excellence Committee to kind of talk through some, some of these things. So, board, you'll remember about a year ago, we got that Transpar study back that kind of laid out the idea of, you know, transportation within the school district and how we can be more efficient routing kids, which kind of led into, you know, bell time talks. They had, they had three different potential options that we could move forward with to kind of help with those, those transportation issues and efficiencies. You know, one was secondary first, elementary second for start times, you know. And then, elementary first, secondary second for start times, or kind of multiple tiers across, you know, different levels, different elementary schools starting at different times, different middle schools, different high schools, you know, a, a whole mix of things. So, all that was put in front of the Operation, Operational Excellence Committee, met multiple times last school year before summer break, kind of discussed these, these things. Well, then, we, after that Operational Excellence Committee met a few times, kind of discussing those things, we, we moved to a forum set up to hear from the general committee on kind of what we're, we're looking at here. Because when you're talking about moving, moving the bell time, it's going to have an impact on everybody. So, we're looking at this as kind of almost as a cost-benefit analysis in the sense of what does moving the bell time mean for the, kind of the, the greater good, if you will, for the, the whole district? So, we have multiple options, one of which would, would have been to do nothing. You know, and as, as we look in the presentation that Dr. Fosnot will have here, ultimately, the committee came to a recommendation, and, and I'll let him take it from there.
Thank you, Mr. Hager.
All right, get my mic on. Yeah, I really appreciate Mr. Hager and his work on Operational Excellence. The committee met last spring, began to dive into the report, make it a recommendation that we needed more input than just the committee, even though it's a wide, well-represented group. It just, this is, as Mr. Hager said, this is moving everybody's cheeses a little bit. So, if we want to be a more reliable, efficient, and have a quality transportation service, then we just need to get, take into consideration more views than just ours. So, that did lead to the forums, which I'll talk about, and also some community and staff surveys. So, if my little remote works, look at that. I'm just going to bring everybody back in time a little bit. This is maybe a little hard read. This is a snippet from the Transpar report. So, if there's grammatical errors in there, we can blame Transpar. But I want to point to just two of significant bullets in there. One, the two red arrows, school start times all fall within a thirty-five, thirty-minute window from one another and special program times like that at BSEP, that's a grammatical error, directly conflict with special education times. So, there's just minor release time issues to get busing service to serve all those. And the last one, the size and use of the transportation facility is being stretched as transportation needs to continue. And I think that's not only maybe our facility, but it's just equipment. It's the buses, it's the drivers. As we continue to grow and get bigger and have more kids, and we know we're growing every year, we continue to put strain on the system. So, one of the recommendations Mr. Hager said that they gave to us last year was to consider a route analysis and going to a two-tier system. And they said you could better provide a more efficient, reliable, and high-quality system if you would do that. So, what they proposed, as again, Mr. Hager said earlier, was three different options. And the committee at that time last spring said, we prefer option A, the star, which was elementary starting before secondary, okay? I will state for the record, they have elementary starting at 7:50, I think, on this graph, and 8:30 for secondary. It's really about not any one division moving a long ways. It's about both divisions moving slightly to create the, again, that, that forty-five-minute separation, hour separation for one bus and one driver to fill and drop kids at one division or one school, and then go out and fill and drive a route, and then drop at another school. So, we immediately double our efficiency within our system, okay? So, we took that recommendation from the committee, and we went out to our community forums this fall. And my apologies for blue on blue there. Our links are going to be hard to hear or see, but hopefully, people can find them online. But we held our three input sessions, had 161 attendees. And then, all those evaluations, all that feedback went to consensus council, and then the board and the committee received that compilation of feedback. So, I mean, it's gone out to the group and to others multiple times, so they can digest it. I won't get into the details tonight. We also did a staff survey. I did put the link there if people want to watch it. We had a community one as well, which I'll hit upon, but we had 208 people respond to a staff survey. Really, watched the video, is very much like the forum, giving you the details of what we're considering, and then allowed staff a free, open text box response to share their concerns or what they were supportive of, what the questions they had, and maybe some areas of concern. From the staff input, you can see we took those 208 responses and just drove them down into what were supportive themes and what were areas of concern. And you can see efficiency and improvements, supporting for tiered system, alignment to best practices as far as which, really, that's about which ones scheduled first and when kids start school, improving reliability and benefiting students. Those are supportive themes from our staff. Areas of concern, what's going to happen to extracurriculars, particularly if secondary is moved later, okay? Childcare and supervision challenges was a concern for themselves as parents, as staff members or parents, and then also our kids that we know are in schools. Families, just schedule disruptions, longer school day for students, which I would tell you, even though it's brought up that it's a longer school day, the, the actual school day isn't changing the length. The, the concern there is now we push you later, and now evening activities go later, evening practice go later. That's where their concern are, is that we end up pushing the clock backwards for kids. And then equity and accessibility, we're worrying about families who might struggle with transportation, and if there was a cost involved, because there was some discussion about charging or increasing walkout distances, and that was part of their concern. We also took the staff input survey and just said, what are the ten big questions? And we're doing that so we make sure we're responsive to what the concerns are. I've highlighted a few here for you, just to look at, and I want to cover, like, how will later start time affect extracurricular activities, including clubs and sports? Well, when looking at other schools that have a two-tier system, practices start times are moved back accordingly. We don't start practices during school. So, I think if we do move to a two-tier system, we're going to accommodate that shift in time, fifteen, twenty minutes that we perceive that could be moving practices back. I would tell you, when we talk with, about varsity sports, and when traditionally varsity, you know, you think about, we're in basketball season, first day of practice today, okay? Or, yeah, today for boys' basketball. You know, when you throw the ball up in the air, that's usually at six o'clock. That's not going to change. Those times are going to remain the same, no matter what we do. Those times are going to remain consistent. Another question was, how will longer bus routes or adjustments affect student attendance or readiness for school? I think based on those insights from the report during the review, they did indicate that two-tier system, we should be able to see reduced rides. So, kids are actually on the bus a shorter time, which might be more attractive to riding the bus and getting to school. What plans are in place for managing supervision of students arriving earlier, waiting for the buses after school? I would tell you, we already have a problem there. We already have a problem, particularly after school at our middle school levels, about kids waiting hour, hour-plus at schools before a bus arrives to take them home. So, we already have challenges there. I would tell you a change, we're already working with KRIA and Bismarck Park and Rec about expanding and enhancing after-school care, particularly at the elementary level, because we know we, that could be changed the most dramatically. We're also making changes within our secondary division to make sure we can accommodate maybe more students working in after-school care. It's hard to believe, but I think we were just talking about before the meeting, we have 112, 117 high school kids working in after-school care already. We need to try to see if we can bolster that and get some more support for childcare. Will there be additional costs for transportation services? I think our staff were concerned about the cost for kids and being a barrier for kids. And even though it's been talked about, it was very unpopular. Nobody, very few people came to me and said, charge me for bus service. So, I don't think that's a, that's a widely supported idea, and it's not in our recommendation. In addition to the staff survey, we did put out a video just for parents. You can see in kind of mid-November, we did get over a thousand responses to that, which I thought was amazing that we got that many. And then, again, you can see the summary of their feedback. So, out of a thousand responses, look at the top five supportive themes. Yeah, there's people who just say, we need to do something. We need to change something. It's alignment with budget realities. We see, and I'm going to share a slide with you with that, with where our budget's at. And there's just some constraints we have to, that are real. They're not made up. We needed to look at improvements. Is there potential for benefits to reduce delays, improve efficiency? Be at a bus stop when we say we're going to be at a bus stop. And then, community flexibility, acknowledging that while the changes are challenging, they think, a lot of people responded, think they're manageable, right? We'll get there. We'll realign, just like a lot of other Class A schools in North Dakota have two-tier systems. We're really the only one who doesn't. So, for large, large schools, multiple high school schools. So, we, the, people were seeing that as an option. Concerns for the families, though, daily routine, you're moving my times, you're changing our family routines, right? Childcare, yep, definitely. Widespread comments on childcare and how are we going to address childcare? Transportation length and fear of cost, which again, we've already talked about costs, but just people not wanting their kids to have to ride the bus longer. They, they don't want that. Increased traffic delays, there was some concerns, a lot of concerns about just dropping off kids, getting to schools. A lot of buses on the road at one time, surprising. There's a lot of people that have noticed that problem, that we do congest the roads at a certain amount of time. And then, even parents talked about equity, low-income families, access to childcare, getting access to after-school care, and making sure there was enough so they could be accommodated. Their questions, again, we garnered from their thousand-and-plus comments, open-ended comments. How will elementary start times impact working parents who rely on a consistent schedule? You know, I think as many parents came and talked to me and members of, in our forums, everyone was uniquely different. There are very few, there is nothing consistent about our work schedules. And, I mean, I know that it's usually eight o'clock, but everybody has a unique story. But I will tell you that an example, like Fargo Public School has a two-tier system, actually kind of a slight modified two-tier system. A lot of their elementary schools are opening at eight o'clock. Doors open at 7:30 for breakfast, you know. So, it is affecting their families. Do we think we could adapt? I do. I think we could adapt to that. What provisions are being made for families with children attending multiple schools? Again, this depends on your family. If you were dropping two kids at the same elementary school, it seemed like a small hurdle. If you're dropping a kid at an elementary school, then you're going to a middle school. We just made that hurdle, thank you, Mr. Hager, we just made that hurdle a little, little tougher. We raised it up, made you, give you a 110 hurdle, not a, not a, not a quarter-mile hurdle. So, it's a little bit tougher to jump because we're going to separate those times. But again, it might be depending on when you're able to drop them off and when they can get breakfast at one school, and when they get breakfast at another school, and when the bell actually starts. So, I think each one of those is, is uniquely different. Can the district guarantee that bus times won't increase with the change? I try not to make guarantees on things I'm not fully aware of yet, and we're just doing the routing right now. But Transpar did indicate in their report, they believe route times should be able to be decreased, should shorten the amount of time kids are on buses. And we're really hopeful that that's, turns out to be the case. And lastly, how will the district evaluate the success, which I think is a very fair question? I would tell you very simply, and any board members get calls about busing? You want to raise your hand if you do? Yes, you all do, right? We get many calls about busing, particularly early in the year. If we could have a change that on the first week of school, all the buses showed up at the bus stops that we say in town, and they all are there within, I'll even give you five minutes either side of when we say we're going to be there because a stoplight might happen, you know. I would call that a major success because we're picking up kids. And if we could have a line of buses outside of each of my middle schools at the end of school so that when all the kids leave, they get on a bus and they go back home, that is a huge success. If we can get there, that we have made the system better. We've made the district better. Intersections, just between staff and between parents and the community, these are four theme, four big themes that we see in all responses. You're impacting my schedule. Yep, we are. What about childcare? Because now you're going to move my childcare. Yep, heard that loud and clear, that we need to support, support families on that. Impact on extracurricular, yep, we're going to change some extracurricular times, even to the point of if secondary starts later, we could have some activities in the morning just to be truly transparent, parent, there could be some activities in the morning. And then, again, equity and access. How do we ensure that we give kids the best opportunity to, to ride a bus, get to school, get to school on time and learn? So, I would let you know that Mr. Share is heading up along with a lot of our secondary, elementary staff, secondary, elementary leadership. We have, we're going to be bringing some community members. We have a park board and, and KRIA representatives and others that are starting to talk about some of the questions, like how do we address childcare? That committee is already working on how can we expand and enhance childcare in our schools so we can address the questions and concerns parents are proposing. So, we're already trying to work on the solutions. I would tell you, based on your questions tonight, board members, you're going to, we're going to talk about when you're going to hopefully look at making a decision on this. And I would tell you, by mid-January, we kind of need to know something to plan ahead. But if you have questions or people have questions, we want to be able to answer as many of those for you as we can too. So, that way, you're, have an informed decision. Committee recommendation, Mr. Hager, myself, and the committee met last week Thursday. We looked at the Transpar report, we looked at the report from the community forums, we looked at the survey data. I actually sent the raw survey data in a, in a searchable database to all the committee members so they could look at all the responses for, from staff and the community. And after we left that unanimously, the committee said, we need to move forward with a two-tier system, and we agree that elementary should start first. Okay, so I think that's what Mr. Hager brought to you tonight. I would tell you from, and I purposely changed the color on the slides because now you're hearing my voice. Before, it's the board, it's people's voice, and it's the committee's voice. This is my team and my voice. Our recommendation is if you want to improve reliability, quality, and safety of our bus, bus fleet and transportation, which nobody is saying no on that. I haven't read into anybody says, you bet, we love unsafe buses, and we want them to be more unreliable or more, less reliable than they are now. Nobody's saying that, then we need to do something. We need to change some aspect of our transportation service. So, the other thing I would tell you, and I, it's kind of like the definition of insanity, just keep doing the same thing over and expect a different outcome. That's, we've all heard that saying, right? So, look over the last four years, what you're spending on busing. And you see that, I mean, two years ago, a fourteen percent, a five percent, a five percent this year. Actually, they wanted more. We just held the line on five percent. It could have been larger than that this year, particularly with our Harlow's contract. If you want to keep doing the same thing and be pressed, because I will tell you, we're going to have more kids in our building next year than we have this year. Odds are in our favor, right? And we're going to have just as difficult or more difficult getting bus drivers than we are now. So, we're going to have the same problems with our system, and we're going to pay more. I, I just don't see how that is a feasible choice. It is a choice. I just don't know how it's a feasible choice, okay? So, again, what do we need to do? Our recommendation is to go forward with a two-tier system of some, with elementary starting first. We've already started routing. Actually, Mr. Share met with Transpar today to begin the routing process and put all of our kids on routes to make sure that we can hit those time targets that we're shooting for. time targets that we're shooting for. That would help inform a lot of people, and turning internal and external, that I can start planning when I know school and the elementary is going to start at seven-fifty, eight o'clock, eight oh five, they can start to shoot for that. Okay? That's what we need to do when we get done with routing. Childcare, we're already working with Parks and Rec and KRIA and our secondary admins on how to expand services and offerings. We're working with our HR department already on, could we hire some of our aid support instead of hiring them only thirty-five hours a week? Could we move that up to forty and get them to help provide some after-school care for our kids? That would be beneficial. Okay? So all three of those, we're working on right now. And again, we'll plan on having more questions answered when the board makes the final decision, which, we have slated that decision-making time to be in Monday, January thirteenth. And the only reason that is, is because I think you could make the decision in December, but respectfully, Mr. Eastgate said, "Dr. Fosnot, you're not going to be at that meeting, and I will divulge that I will not be at the next meeting, that we shouldn't do it without you here." So we're going to wait till January. So I would stand for any questions you might have.
Board members, any questions? Ms. Preskey.
So, again, just to kind of go back, I just pulled up the possible future bell time scenarios slide. Do you, have you, do you have a timeframe you're kind of landing on then for us to base this decision in January on?
Again, that's the projection from Transpar. We've started routing as of today. We believe we should be able to have that done before January thirteenth, that's kind of a timeline we think we can do, but what we've told in all community forums is, "I can't give you an exact time till we route," but that's what we're shooting for. We're trying to shoot for those times as reflected in option A.
And then, along with the childcare aspect, I'm sure that there will be discussions or are discussions already on those middle schoolers and maybe the high schoolers that aren't driving, that need to be dropped off before their start time, that there would be, that would be allowable, there'd be a place and...
Yeah, I think for middle school and high school, you can see from the elementary example on the, I'll even, I don't know, ding ding ding, my backup don't work. Behind the back.
Did you think the sound effect would help?
Ding ding ding, it didn't work. Yeah, I know, I just made the backup, the backup sign. Oh, look, now it works. On and off, amazing when you reset the technology. I think when you look at this anticipated, you see the really dark purple in front of elementary, that's at seven-thirty. This was an idea that we would be trying to drop off about half hour before elementary starts, so kids can go to breakfast, right? There'd be a similar drop-off, maybe not quite a half hour, but slightly ahead of secondary, so kids can still have a breakfast time, have a gathering time before they go to school. So I think your question, yes, there would be, we just don't have it reflected on this, but I don't think it'll be as long as it is in the elementary. Again, our routing, once we know that, will be quite beneficial for us to know where that falls out.
And I guess when I think about who else needs to know about this, or what other partners should be looped in, the chamber comes to mind, that hopefully we can try to get some communication to them, messaging to them, to share with their members in the city, because I think this is going to depend, or we're going to need, we're employers to be a little flexible as well on this for our working parents.
Agreed.
So I think maybe just trying to loop them in on these discussions, and maybe there could be a short article that could be published that just says that this is in the talking stages, or we wait until we make a decision. But either way, I think that they would be a great resource.
I appreciate that. Actually, we're writing an article for our parent newsletter that goes out next week, kind of to summarize this. I will share that, I'm actually in the chamber tomorrow morning, so I'll share that with Brenda.
Board members, Ms. Peterson.
First of all, thank you for all of the presentation, and I especially, I hope the public takes into account sometimes like the consensus, consensus council report, kind of summarizing what everybody said. I really appreciate the slides where you summarize those talking points that came from all of the surveys, both staff and families. And one thing I just would ask is we're, you know, obviously, there's still some decision-making that needs to happen, once we have some of the details, which was one of the things that came out in the forums, without having some of those concrete details, just like any family, if you don't know the start or the finish time, you know, knowing what you might have in terms of childcare or needs or anything like that, it remains a little bit of a question mark. But one thing I would like to just put a pin in, or something that we, maybe, maybe it's for board member, Hager, to bring back to the Operational Excellence Committee, is obviously the bell time is the most, the biggest thing that we're asking for, kind of move-my-cheese type of stuff, where it's like, okay, that's really going to affect all families regardless of bus, busing. But I did think that there were a lot of notes that came in and about the, kind of the safety and the quality that I think, and I hope isn't missed. Because of the bell time takes a lot of the focus, there still was a lot of just making sure that they're feeling safe and that supervision is there, and then, not only supervision at the schools, once they're dropped off, or anybody that's just affected by the bell time, but then what's happening on those buses. So I know that that was, and is consistently taken into consideration by those, but I don't want to forget that in this, because there is still that, okay, so what's happening when they're on the bus? What's happening to, to just that overall quality?
If I can respond to your question, and I maybe should address it in there, one, we heard many concerns at the forum about just bus safety and conduct, and I'm going to guess back in the early seventies, when I was riding a bus, that as an older student, as a senior high student, right, I was not always the best example to the young riders on the bus, even though I was a good kid. But, you know, mixing those age groups, sometimes you get to be exposed to some other behaviors that we just like our young ones not to be exposed to. One of the benefits of this is, for the most part, and I'm going to say, not all, because we have some really long routes where we might be combining age populations, there is an opportunity to kind of segregate populations and say, "We're just going to pick up elementary kids now, and they don't cross-segregate with middle school, high school kids." Then you go and you pick up the high school kids. So there is some benefit in there, I think we heard at the forums, people would appreciate. Yeah.
Board members, any further questions? Thank you for that report, Dr. Fosnot, appreciate it, and Mr. Hager and your work with the committee.
All right, you want me to go right in the next, number two?
Yes, sir, non-resident student report.
Non-resident student report, this you get annually, so we're just providing this to you. I will, so you can see the number of students that, non-resident students that are attending into Bismarck, you know, your policy changer, that's probably drifting less and less and less all the time due to policy revisions in the past, but you also can see the number of students that are residing, are attending schools outside of BPS districts, so they're BPS students who leave us. I would, I will make a call over to Dr. Bits and let him, you know, have him wonder where those sixty kids of BPS go to Mandan. I know some are educators' kids and stuff, I know when I've worked over there, they bring their kids to school, which I, good for them, but we have sixty kids going to Mandan. The other one I want to point out is Yellowstone at the bottom, because that one maybe you haven't seen on previous reports. That was opened up by Century Code. Yellowstone is a small K-eight school that is providing virtual content, virtual coursework to students throughout the state, and any student in the state can open and enroll into them, particularly, we're seeing that with homeschool kids. So homeschool families are opting into the Yellowstone curriculum, which again is one-hundred percent online. So that is, I would bet, almost exclusively all home-educated students taking part in that.
Board members, any questions on the non-resident student report? Seeing none, Dr. Fosnot, we can go to eight C, financial report.
And culminate the evening out, kick that off to Mr. Share.
Thank you, President Eastgate, members of the board. Always pleased to see you always save the best for last. So in front of you, we have the financial report that we have, last time when I reported, we were tweaking the boxes with the favorable and unfavorable, those are fixed. So this is our final new financial report that you'll receive monthly. Couple things, as you look, that you'll notice that we are unfavorable by a lot smaller numbers than are favorable. So that's always, when you look at the big picture, that's what you want to see. I kind of like this, we take all the revenues on one and all the expenditures on the other, and then you can do your two-year comparison. Not only, you know, it's hard to compare a number to a number, which we do on the left side of that tabular part, but then you can also say, "Well, how does that relate percentage-wise?" Okay, well, we're, we appear to be tracking very similar to last year and the year prior, but it also show those anomalies where, okay, explain, what's going on there? Why do we, why are we seeing that? And I will say that some of the interesting things are, you know, we've dealt with SRF funds the last couple of years, so that's kind of created a wrinkle in what we could expect to see on some of these. And then we also do include just the report from our accounting software. I will say that there's really nothing that I feel like stands out to bring to the board's attention in the report, and I would answer any questions the board would have concerning the financial report.
Thank you, Mr. Share. Mr. Hager with a question.
Thank you, Mr. Eastgate. Not a question, just a comment to Mr. Share and the accounting department, appreciate your guys' work on modifying this report that you guys have done over the years and gotten to this point. I like the way the data is presented at the top, just makes it easier for somebody who's, maybe doesn't have an accounting background, to get a quick glimpse of maybe how things are looking, being able to compare to year-to-year quickly, so I appreciate you guys' work on this, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hager. Any other questions or comments from board members? Seeing none, thank you very much, Mr. Share for that report, and Dr. Fosnot for your superintendent's report. All agenda items have been considered, I declare this meeting adjourned.